Do I just stand in?
Yeah.
Initial, just initial.
Initial because they're back. Yeah, send them back.
If there's an injury, she needs to sign the notice about.
She works all day.
Don't know.
Right, we'll, right, it's six thirty-two, I will, I will begin. Six thirty-two.
Done all right?
Yeah. Move this camera out of the way. So, welcome again to the members of the public. We've got apologies, we've got a full, oh no. Oh yes. Daniel sent apologies, so he proposed, proposed by David, seconded by Joy. All those in favour, show hands. So that's number one. Are you abstaining or?
Yes.
One abstention. No, that's Joyce, that's Joyce.
George.
Item two is declarations of interest. Members are asked to declare. Are there any interests basically? If you've got any, if there's any peculiar interests then put them in the book and if you've got any changes in any other interest, please notify Martin.
I'm just trying to find the item number, but it's the Willow.
Brook?
Willow Brook, as it said, item, I'm looking at the wrong page, there's a minute. Item number nine.
Nine.
Because I live in the road.
Okay. Are you going to be commenting and not voting or?
I comment, but I just have to declare that I live in the road.
Didn't you also submit, you submitted a thing onto the planning portal as well, didn't you?
Yeah, I don't have to declare that.
You don't have to declare that? You put that in as a council or as a member of the public?
Both.
Right, okay. Right, thank you. So, and you put that in the book anyway, okay?
So the class did check and tell me to do that.
Your declaration, put it in the book.
I'm going to. The class did say to me about the plan.
So item three then is the minutes. Of the, do you three want your own room? The minutes, Martin, you're proposing?
I would just like to, and apologies to the class for not getting back to it before the meeting. On the item relating to the expenditure, eight, one eight, two, stroke eighteen. I'd just like it to be minuted that the chairman gave a presentation at that point.
Oh, okay, yeah, fine, thank you.
Thank you. With no comment, because that did happen.
Yes. Any of the, looking for a proposal then for those, for those that were here, if you weren't here, if you were absent. Paul was absent, Sally Anne was absent and Joy were absent, so you don't, so you don't have to, you'll be abstaining on this one. So proposed by Joyce, seconded by, so all those in favour then, so we've got. Eight, eight, and then three veterans. And you're allowed to know you're here, let's honour the council about what items. Item four is chairmen's and members' reports, received reports from the chairman and members who have attended meetings on behalf of the local town council. Do you want to take it? I'd like to have everyone go round. Yes?
Yes.
Are there any, I know that there was one that came through, all right, Joyce.
No, no, I'll send her. We don't have to write anything, our resume's all written down. The tree wardens' report on the tree wardens' meeting on the ninth of October. It was attended by eight of the parish tree wardens. There were many questions answered by the Rutland County Council forestry officer. In fact, it was a very good meeting. Discussions on invading tree roots, damage to walkways, diseases of trees. And what can be done to encourage schools to take part in planting trees. Each parish had their own problems, including the development, which came with the big disaster. They ran jam in on the A1 where we have lost a complete orchard. A chip orchard, it's gone. Trees in hedgerows and the removal of hedgerows and tree gallback. I have to say, the removal of the hedgerow has become a court proceedings. A discussion followed about bird boxes and the National Planning Policy Framework paper dated July twenty eighteen. I've tried to find it and I can't find it. It's worthy to note that tree wardens do not have to be parish councillors. I was the only parish councillor there who was also a tree warden. I gave an account of the forthcoming Ecology Weekend in twenty nineteen. Charlotte, Ripath and I are working on this and details will emerge later. It's at the castle for the Weekend of Ecology. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Any other reports? Paul?
Sorry, I think you've just missed something off that one. Can I just add this bit in? The deputy tree warden was notified on the first of October and against on the eighth of October by me. And I don't want any comebacks that I didn't notify him.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, I attended the AGM welcoming room last night. We got a fairly extended rundown on the last year. A report on the last year's successes, things not so successful, prospects for the new year. And problems with irrigation due to the climate. However, apart from that, we elected a new committee of officers. I can't tell you who they are at the moment because they were mainly on first name basis. That was my first visit there. And, but basically what we'll do is, as soon as I get the minutes, I'll email you the information. Apart from that, I also attended the Mayor of the Plan Group meeting this afternoon. Where you tend to conclude the opinion gathering operation on the twentieth of September.
September?
Sorry, October, October, you know, sorry, I'm a month behind. Twenty, twentieth of October. And proceed directly to formulate a plan, hopefully finished by the new year. But again, I'm waiting for the information that they're going to email us. And the details and I'll pass that on as soon as I get it.
Brilliant, thank you, Paul. Are there any councils' questions next? There was any member of the public, was there any councillors' questions next? No. Class report, no report from the class. So item seven, deputation by the public. Members of the public are invited to address the meeting in accordance with the procedures laid down in our standing orders. So you can address anything on the meeting basically and you can speak for three minutes. So if you, I know there's lots of people here from the Willow Brook. Yeah? I know that we're discussing this on the item, on the agenda, but if it doesn't become exempt, I don't think it will, I don't see why it should be. Doesn't need to be, you'll be able to state that and then it might be, if any perfect questions come up, it might lean on you then, I'm not allowed to do that. But if any of the members of the public have anything they want to say or anybody else, if you can understand. Shoot.
It's customary to stand. And.
Sorry.
I may expect to ask for permission as a landlord for us to build a new residential home on the land behind Willow Brook. And to apologise again for not seeking this permission earlier. Following our previous meeting where you made us aware of your concerns and those of the neighbouring residents, we have carried out the request. We've made contact with the residents of Clare's Own Place and have agreed ways forward to alleviate their concerns. We've marked out a footprint of the proposed new building and some of you have taken a par offer to build it aside. We are aware of the rubbish at the Corners' Side and agree with this move in, however, we've not yet built it. We want to build this facility for several reasons. Firstly, it would enable our current search users to have a better living environment. It also would enable us to refurbish our current home to provide services for wider groups of vulnerable adults. It will also create jobs in the local area. As you know, we have a small non-profit charity and the only provider in Oakham for adults with learning disabilities. We've worked really closely with Rutland County Council to establish the needs of vulnerable adults within the county before devising our plans. The proposed new development is in line with Rutland County Council's Learning Disability Market Position Statement for two thousand and eighteen. Which states that their aim is to work collaboratively with partners to make the best use of resources and improve the learning disability options for residents in Rutland. This is something we hope we can achieve through the new build. We will offer all our AUCs to Rutland residents and the council assures us that the need in Rutland is so high that community pools will be full at all times. Therefore, we will consistently be having a large positive impact on local vulnerable people. We are aware that if you give us permission, there are areas within the build that we will need to mind loss, such as extra traffic and noise during the build. And we will ensure that we work closely with the neighbourhood to keep disruption to as much of a minimum as possible. If you give us permission to build, we are more than happy to negotiate an increase in ground rent and other areas of relief as a result. Thank you.
Any other, any other note? Okay, so item eight would be to exempt item nine, and I can't think at the moment whether you would too exempt it. Martin?
I'd like to make a proposal that we don't exempt item number nine.
Okay, so councillor, Martin has proposed that we don't exempt, seconded by Paul. All those in favour who are not exempt? That's unanimous. So item nine then, which is an appendic B, which was the photograph of it. I think nearly all councillors, well, a lot of the councillors attended the meeting at the offices on the High Street. Was it a month and a half, nearly two months ago now, I think. There was a courtesy extended where councillors were invited down to have a look at the area where it had been marked out. And I think a number of councillors have done this. I didn't personally go down because I was able to interpret the plans easier, easily, because I mean, there were plans before. I don't know if everybody else has had a chance to look at some of the documents that have come through, but I did take opportunity to look on the county council website. And there was various letters on there, the majority of the letters were in favour of it. I would now, I think we need to give an indication to the, and I'm not saying that we need to make a definitive decision tonight. Because we would need to speak to our, to solicitors and all the rest of it. We need to give an indication of whether we would be moving forward or saying no. And if we said no, we'd have to have, I think, pretty good reasons. But I'll be interested to see what each councillor has to say as we work around the table. Anybody got anything to say first? Fine.
Well, I live in the ward.
Oh, yes.
Yes. We have a thing which has been tabled this evening and that's one of my biggest bugbears. And I know I spoke to the class and she's sort of explaining things, but this is a serious issue for council. And we are supposed to have information three days before the meeting so we can make a careful and considered thing. Yourself, you've said, we don't know whether we can say yes or no. This document that's been handed to me this evening says that we can actually say no. I don't know if anybody else is ready, but that's why we should be given the things.
This one we've discussed.
Yes. But the thing is, also, the agenda item doesn't actually say what we're being asked to decide. So really, we should be deferring it tonight for a proper report to be brought to council, but we probably won't. But anyway, I would like to move on and just make some comments. Part of it is my disappointment and I accept the apology from the lady who's come from Willow Brook Trust. In the fact that it appears that they ignored the council's request for further information. The item was deferred and went ahead and put planning permission in, which has been granted. That's fair enough, but they spent money. We could decide, as we've already decided to, that if we were the planning authority, we wouldn't give planning permission. So I don't know what the council will decide, but after the meeting, I was also disappointed by the lack of professionalism. From people who claimed to be employees of the organisation. And I mean by their opinions, which were made personally against me on Facebook, on the Rutland Radio page. I cut it short and said it was unprofessional to continue this, but it really upset me the way I was personally attacked by people who claimed to be your employees. And also we've heard tonight that it's going to create jobs. I've read all the paperwork and I've read in your own paperwork that there are going to be job losses. It's quite clear in there that it's going to reduce the amount of people employed because it's becoming, sorry, I'm losing my breath, because I've no time. I need to pause, but you know, it's, it's, these are the reasons that I objected to it before. It's because residents didn't want it. I don't know what you've done in the meantime to apparently change their mind or whatever. But they told us at the meeting that they didn't want it, so that's why I supported my residents. I also had concerns because I can't clearly define whether the land that the organisation asks for as a garden, looking at the plans, I'm not a planning expert. It looks like the second east land, which is still allotment land, but apparently Rutland County Council is now declared that it's open space, can be built on. Will I object to that? You know, the allotment land is quite scarce, especially in our counties, you know, and we, we need to protect it. And I don't think people have done their, I don't know who, but I don't want people to take it personally. But I don't think that it has been handled at all correctly. You know, we've been offered extra money, that's not the point. Ground rent is cheap, I paid ten pounds for a being sold property, so to be weighed in money, that's not the point. This should have been handled properly. When this council decided we wanted more information, they shouldn't have gone behind our backs and just put planning in and dumped it on us. And I'll shut up before I upset people.
Thank you. Right, I'll, I know that Joy will say, I'm going to work around the table and see if anybody wants to say anything as we go around, so. Joyce, do you want to say anything in five minutes?
Well, I was wanting to listen to Zoe, but I've got a master of pattern.
Zoe, Zoe, did Joyce want to say something?
Yeah, can I say?
Good question, yes.
I respect what Martin is saying in terms of what should have happened and what didn't happen. But I think it would be a real shame to not move discussion on based on what's happened in the past. I think it would be good to move forward. And having worked in social care for a number of years, Willow Brook is behind the times and really does need updating. And I think it really would be an asset to the county. And if the objections that the residents had have been looked at and reassessed, then I think that's a good start.
Yeah, thank you. Peter, you?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I support the sentiments that are being expressed. However, I do feel we want to move forward. I intended to get a feel of what it's all about. Generally, I support it in principle. I think we should accept the apology that it hasn't been set up properly. But, you know, that is what it is, we need to move on. However, this is an asset, so we've got to do it properly. We're looking at risk management later and we need to go through the proper process. The solicitors need to look at it and we need to look at all the ramifications, get some sort of valuation on what the rent should be. And other than that, in other words, we need to move forward on a professional basis.
Thank you, Peter. We'll skip over me. David?
We're welcome, thank you. Yeah, well, the only comment I have is really, is as an authority and everybody that's in this room sat at the planning meeting. And as I remember quite clearly, members in this authority said it's over development. And as far as I know, that has not changed. So I, I can't see your argument that you're saying, yes, we should go ahead now, when not two, three months ago, you all thought it was over development of the site. And you're under risk of, we've had a meeting with, people have been down to look at the site. But at the end of the day, when you looked at the plans as a planning issue, you rejected this because of over development. And I know that one of the residents who spoke quite kindly at the meeting is here tonight. And unless his views have changed, which we won't know because we've gone past, I don't know, are we dealing with this as a planning issue or?
It's not a planning issue, no, no. Because planning, planning has been wrong.
I know, I know, so we don't actually know, although when we're told that the residents' fears have all been exchanged. And please, you shouldn't be passing paperwork at a meeting with a member of the public. And I know he's a county councillor, but our standing orders do state clearly. So, you know, I think we're in a position where we've already made a decision and now we're going to try and make the same decision again. I do wonder if the sixth rule should be implemented because you'd be asked to decide on the same planning issue. That's all, Jim.
I'll just, I'll just address a bit on the sixth rule. When we discussed it before, we considered a planning application. And this is not a planning, this is now the landlords making a decision on whether they allow the development to go. So that's sort of marginally how to get around that, I hear you, so, Jean?
I also went to look at the site, I went to it at the same time as Peter. I feel that there is a need and from that point of view, I feel we need to support it. They are very vulnerable people and Rutland would be proud to help this facility in the Oakham area. What I would like to see though, if it goes ahead and goes forward, is a lot more discussion and agreement with us when things are going to happen. Because we are the landlord and having visited the site, and I did make a point while I was there, it is a mess. The trees look awful, they're way overgrown and the general feeling of the site was uncareful. But that aside, what you do there is brilliant and I would want to support it from that point of view. And I think moving forward, working together is a better way forward. And I accept that the way that you went ahead with it really was wrong, but we need to move on.
Thank you, Jean.
The day that I was going to come and look round, unfortunately it was cancelled, so I'm going to come on Monday now, so I'm really looking forward to that. There's just one or two things that I've tried to pick up, but it's very difficult on these flat photographs because it doesn't show anything. But I observed these two things, there's a hut and a greenhouse, they look totally, and, and looking at the planners best I can, because I'm not an expert. Where is this recreation area? Because these other people are coming in and I'm concerned that there is adequate recreation when it's a hot summer, they want to go outside and perhaps do a bit of gardening, do a bit of something. And I'm not sure, so on Monday I'll be clearer, but at the moment, I just think that looks an awful waste of a lovely greenhouse and a pot and shed place.
Sally Anne?
No, I'm looking to Alabot.
No, thanks, Sally Anne. Paul?
Yes, I'd like to.
Sorry, sorry, Paul.
Company sanctions.
I'd like to support Zoe and Jean. Frankly, these are obviously vulnerable people in need and I think that takes priority over whether or not we've got the procedure correct. And as for changing our minds, if the council gets a bit of leg on its face now and again, I don't really care. We're here to serve people, not buildings.
Can I just clarify that point? Is the, is the greenhouse and the, and the shed?
Yes, you can.
It belongs to?
Does it belong to you or the allotment?
The allotment.
Yeah.
Who?
The allotment.
Oh, right.
So the, they're not numbers, but.
They're irrelevant. They're irrelevant.
They're not.
Thank you, let's, Joy. Thank you.
First of all, can I say that the, the plan that we have in our agendas is not correct? So if you're looking at this plan that's been sent out for the agenda, this is not the correct plan for the building that we're looking at. It's an odd one. It dates back and it has the entrance in a different place, the buildings are the other way around.
What, what the, speak to that.
Yeah.
Can I ask us what number is on the bottom floor?
Yes, yes, it's seven, eight, seven, seventeen, two, eight. And it should, it should be five B.
It was five, I think, okay. Five B. So we haven't got the right one?
We haven't got the right one.
Well, I don't know.
It isn't, I've got the correct plan, still.
They're more than ever on.
No, it's one I got from one of your colleagues the other day.
I sent you the correct one.
Yeah, today?
Yeah.
That's the one that went out last week with what your colleague sent me.
We updated them, I spoke to you yesterday.
I've got a copy.
How does it, how does the difference between the two plans?
Here's one.
Just going to see, I'm just going to see if it's a significant impact.
The RCC one here.
It is actually quite different, yes, it's very different because traditionally, the one, the first one you've got is one at Ruxley. We initially took the access from the bank and that, from the existing track and down the bank. But we actually changed it round, so the access went through the actual Willow Brook site. Because we didn't really want to impact on the existing allotments. So by taking, swapping the access round the other way, it meant that everything was guarded within sight and had minimal impact.
Right, okay. So does it change the size of the footprint or the height?
No, no, it doesn't affect the building.
Thank you, right, let Joy carry on, Mike.
So just so we can be a little bit familiar. I'd like to say this is an innovative issue and that's, I've heard that tonight. And I agree that it's an important facility and it's going to serve a good need. But I think it's incumbent on us as the landlords to ensure that this building, when it's constructed, is the best it can be. And I have some doubts at the moment. And my doubts are that firstly, the land was changed in, when the dipol piece was taken out. It was, the change of use was approved by Secretary of State from allotment to amenity land for the use and enjoyment of the residence and staff of Willow Brook. The, setting aside the, the problem with the permission going through, the application not being right. When you look at the plans, the building is large and covers a high percentage of the site. It's placed where it is because there is a sewage pipe through the middle of the site, but I understand that sewage pipes can be bridged.
Probably not that one.
Okay.
Let's have a think about this one. The remaining amenity space that is left for this site is on the allotment side of the building, which is sloped. And which therefore has perhaps less suitable space for the residents to use. There is, in order to make the access on the plans which you do not have, they have taken an access road between the two existing buildings. Taking out the whole of the existing garden where the summer house is and putting in a roadway and parking spaces. To a large piece of parking space on the new amenity land. This is going to impact on the people who live in both those two buildings, who instead of looking out on a piece of garden, are going to be looking out on tarmac and parking. Which is perhaps not the best it is. When you look at the new building, because it's set so far towards the Brook side of the property. It looks on the plans like a large piece of space in front of it. If you go and measure it, there is something like just six metres between the patio doors and the sitting rooms and fence. And on the inside of that, I presume, as was for the previous building, we will be building a hedge, so that's going to go down to five metres. Which means the sitting rooms, which are going to be used by our residents, sorry, the residents. Are going to be overshadowed by a tall hedge and tall trees and they're not going to get a lot of light. And there's not a lot of space there as amenity space. So my concern is that the building, however much we need it, needs to be the right building for the sites. And we're getting, we're going to have a further, let me see, how many extra people is it? It's ten to eight people, so we're going to have more people using the site. And yet there's going to be significantly less attractive land that they can use. The garden and the sunhouse is going to go, there's very little, it's going to be garden shadowed outside the sitting room. And the free land is sloped and not very suitable. I see that they want to have an access, a vehicle access to the new building. But the current, the current layout has fourteen parking spaces of the current bay. By putting all this tarmac through, they are losing some of the front, so we're going down to eight on the front and eight on the back. So the, for all of this loss of garden, they're gaining two car parking spaces. I think it's a hard decision to make, because I think we have to think about the quality of the building and the quality of the lack of people who want to live there. I am not against having the building there, but I think it needs to be, take more into account about the site and how it works to make it the best it can be. And with the present plans, I personally would not be in favour of it, because there's not sufficient amenity, and that's what the plan was given for.
Right, Joyce.
I've got rid of mine. Can I just congratulate the council both for actually addressing the mayor and not the people that are sitting there? And that's how it should be. I've lived with Willerbrook ever since the building was built. It has been controversial from the very, very beginning. I have thoughts about, yes, I have worked in the National Health Service, and yes, people are vulnerable. But this paper was given to us tonight, and it says, number three says six point one. Also provides that the property may only be used for the defined permitted use, which was used for gardens and amenity land for use in connection with the adjoining premises, known as Willerbrook. Under the terms of this lease, therefore, the Oakham Town Council, as landlords, can refuse consent for any building on this land. Now, this land was originally for the residents of Willerbrook to have an amenity, to dig, to have a little plot of their own where they could grow stuff, et cetera, et cetera. To me, this, in some terms, is what I will term land grab.
Yeah, right. Martin.
Yeah, I would like to make a proposal as well, but...
No, I'm not making any proposal, no. Because I've finished speaking.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment, but let you know that I'd like to make a proposal. I also had vote, and that's why I was trying to point out earlier, but because, once again, we're only given this information as we're sitting down for a meeting. That was given to them in 2012, and I've been careful not to use those words, land grab, because I did actually say earlier that this has been in the planning for some time, and it's possible that, I won't say anymore, but, you know, we could get into trouble, because when we gave that land, I asked for it just to be licensed, and we'd given a lease, which clearly states, according to the solicitor, and I do have the lease at home and I will check it, that they can't build on it, so that should be the end of the matter. But we did not seek permission from the Secretary of State to give away allotment land again. And that's where I'm concerned for this council implications of what we as a council have done. You know, the allotment acts are there to protect allotments. And as Joyce pointed out, there was a lot of, and I've looked into it, I know exactly who set up the trust and everything, and the history of it, and it did have to go to the Secretary of State. And that is the law. We could be held responsible for what we've done, and this is what I'm asking, why I want to give a proposal. We can't make the decision this evening. And I know Adam wants to speak, but we really...
Well, I'd like to be able to...
Yeah, but afterwards, if I could make a proposal, please.
David said that a member of the public was here and might like to address at this point as well. Is that the case? No?
Yeah, good opportunity, Mr. Chairman. I must admit, I tend along not having an expectation to address the forum. I didn't realise the plans had actually changed since the initial...
I think it's the entrance and access.
But it sounds as though, with respect, it sounds as though the plans have actually materially changed the site. Now, we've obviously been in conversation with the Brooklyn House Community Trust, and we're intending to do a site visit as residents of the House, and we're intending to do a site visit in the next few days. What I'd rather do is actually determine until such time as we've done that visit what our feelings are. There are only two of us represented here today, there are actually four people who have impacted, four households who have impacted. So I think in the light of the new plans and in the light of the fact that we're going to do a site visit, I'd like to actually regroup and consider what our reaction to the revised permission. It does strike, I have to say, that it does strike me as that this, the process has been bizarrely askew as well. I think that should be said.
I think we acknowledge that. Right.
Point of interest, these plans that you've got, I don't know where they've come from, but the planning application written on these plans, the ones that you would have seen on the ones that are on the table, not the ones that are planned.
The same ones that we showed, you have the plan.
Right, well, I just want to address the, everybody really. I don't think we should be using words like land grab and phrases like Secretary of State and unlawful or illegal, because all of this is incorrect, in my opinion, because nobody here is qualified to make those comments or those observations. councillor Brooks even alluded about that he's got the deeds at home and will probably even look at them later on when you get home. Don't make the comments, please, councillors, or indeed anybody.
We're allowed to have an opinion.
Councillor Brooks, I'm speaking now, so please comply. So I'd say that make any comment, I mean, Joyce raised some interesting points and other points that I've highlighted here. And the main thing was, is that, yes, David, the town council rejected the planning application at a planning meeting, and they used things like overdevelopment. It's gone to the Brooklyn County Council, and the planning authority there passed it. So they identified no planning considerations. So that's a slightly higher authority than us. There were points raised about, yes, they were going to create jobs, somebody else said, no, it said they're not, but we've heard this evening that it would create more jobs. In fact, it's even going to create two more car parking spaces, if no other reason for staff to park, I would imagine. The majority...
Sorry, Chairman, but that's not documented.
I'm not pausing so you can talk. I'm pausing so you can be quiet, please. The majority of letters from other residents are in agreement. The impact on the allotment land, I do not believe, in fact, there has been any objection from the allotment society, and there has been no impact on allotment land as such. And it does say in the document, yes, admitted it, it was only handed out this evening, because as it became available to the clerk, she was very keen to make sure that everybody was aware of it. And, yes, Joyce very quite rightly pointed out paragraph three. Therefore, Oakham Town Council, as landlords, can refuse consent for any building on the land. But they could also allow it. So it's up to us, it's not up to somebody else, it's up to us as landlords. I believe that there is some confusion over the plans. I accept, as the chairman and as an individual councillor, the fact that you didn't follow the procedures, I'm not going to allow that to stand in the way, and I like what Paul said, I'm not going to allow that minor point, and it is a minor point, if you think about the seriousness of what we're talking about, impact on any decision that this council makes. Because everything I've heard so far from people in this room, members of the public, obviously Brooklyn House Community Trust, but also a wider spectrum of people, is that they do believe that this facility is a little bit unique in Brooklyn, and it does offer an incredibly valuable service. Now, Martins wants to make a proposal. I'm hoping that somewhere in your proposal, Martin, and I'm not going to guard you on this, I'm just going to say, I'm not making one myself at the minute. I'm hoping that you're looking to defer this and potentially probably set up a working group where exploring more detail what this would be, what the correct plans are, and look at the further impacts. And I think that's, and because I was checking the councillors' opinions around the room, and the majority of councillors at the moment seem to be in favour, although it could be fifty fifty. What is your proposal, Martin?
Well, if I can just come back to this, when you said I shouldn't be commenting about the Secretary of State, I object to that because...
We can object, I made it.
Yeah, but you shouldn't be making it, because the allotment is protected by the allotment land, which the Secretary of State governs.
What's your proposal?
My proposal, and I'm not going to propose a working group, because this should actually be down to the office at this stage. My proposal is that this matter is deferred to the next meeting, and that we are provided with proper information. And, you know, I've no disrespect to the office, but what we've been provided before this meeting just didn't help at all.
So you want it deferred to the November meeting, so we can get some additional information?
An update, basically. It's not a decision that we're going to be able to make overnight, because leases have got to be gained.
What information are you after?
Well, we're starting from point A, really, because what we have is inadequate. So that's what I'm saying, is that we've had a request this evening, a verbal request to build on land.
Right, so...
So we need to now defer that, because we don't have the information to make that decision.
So Martin is going to propose that this is deferred to the November meeting, so that we can get additional information. David wanted to say something on the other side.
I'll make an amendment, if I may, Chairman, to that, and that a working group is set up to look at the lease before any decision is made. Because obviously, what we decide, if we decide what we've decided rent should be, and later want to pay, then it's... So, yes, more information will spring about in November, and in between that we'll have a working group to discuss this.
Can I just finish for a second, I'm up for the proposal. You've just said that none of us are qualified to do that, so we have a solicitor, and that's why I'm saying it's down to the office to do it. You've actually said publicly that no councillor is qualified to make any opinion on it. So I'm working with... But the deputy chairman has just said that we need to look at the leases, but you've told me I shouldn't be looking at it and making comments.
Yeah, you've made the point three times, I'm going to listen to what Joyce has to say now.
So that's my proposal on the table.
I've got it, I've got it.
Then it's being amended, so we need to deal with that, please.
Joyce.
Oh, thank you, Chairman. And I would second a deferment on this, because the residents are going to regroup, and they need time as well. So I would propose, no, I would second that it is deferred until we've got all the information in front of us. Thank you.
Yes, I'm going to hear it. Anne.
Right, I don't know what you'd call it this time, because there's so many bits and pieces going around, but I would like to suggest that we do have a working group on this, so that we can bring it up at the next meeting, but we are all in touch, and one reason is because I want to come and have a look. And so I just think that would be helpful, because in theory, I think it's brilliant, but we want the residents to be happy, we want everybody to be happy, because if you've got discontented residents, then, you know, there's a big problem. So I'd love to come and have a look, and have a look here, and do it, I think.
Right, so I've got a proposal from Martin, which I'm going to give you first, where, because naturally we could have another proposal where we set up a working group, so I'm going to deal with them individually. So Martins was that this decision by the council is deferred until the November meeting to enable, can we get some more, definitely the accurate plan?
It's not officially the agenda item, because we don't even really know officially what the decision should be from the agenda, we're just deferring the item. No, it's...
No, no, you carry on, Martin, the rest of us will go to the pub, so you balance it. At the end of the day, I'm trying to get your promotion through, but you won't let me.
But Chairman, seriously, I could have proposed this evening that we deferred this whole item straight away, because this agenda item, this agenda item is not legal, because it doesn't tell us what we should be doing. It's as simple as that. You wouldn't have it at Brooklyn County Council.
I mean, that's irrelevant.
And it's because the big issue is this is Brooklyn County Council, they want to force it.
You raise a point which is not going to get seconded, because you won't give anybody a chance to speak. The councillor Brooks has made the proposal that this item is deferred to enable additional information to be brought to the council's attention in November, to also allow the residents that are going to go down and have a look at the site to do that and probably give us some feedback. Also enables the community trust to actually make sure that we have got exactly the right information. So basically, it's a deferral till November, which appears to have been seconded by councillor Lucas. So all those in favour that this is deferred... Oh, no, I'm dealing with yours. So I'm going to come to working groups in a moment. So all those in favour that this is deferred to November, so we can get some more accurate information? Show hands, please.
I don't understand.
Just vote on this, please. We're putting it back a lot. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favour, all those against that? All those who were two? Right, so three against. Right, so it's now been deferred to November. Now, David suggested that a working group be set up, who could, on behalf of the council, probably, I would suggest that a working group is not a bad idea, I don't think you mentioned it as well, because they could liaise with Willerbrook to get the plans together. They could liaise with the clerk and the solicitor to get this legal stuff ironed out. And also to start looking at, discussing with that solicitor, in the event that it goes ahead in, let's say, November, that what would be a rent review situation. So is that the kind of thing we're seeing? So a proposal, a working group?
You didn't include what I was intending, that we could actually, not just with Willerbrook, but we could with the, when the, sorry, the neighbourhood people...
Residents.
Residents, sorry, residents, would get theirs, then they can, you know, feed back to us as well.
Yeah, that's...
But wouldn't it be better if they discussed with us first, so that we have a whole picture of the whole thing?
All right, let me just, let me just iron this out, a working group is set up, and if I... Right, a working group is set up that consists of at least three members of this council, the clerk, and a representative giving the feedback or the information from the residents, if they want to, and from Willerbrook. And that way, because you can have... It might be that the residents go, yeah, this is our opinion, and they might just want to send a letter in saying what their opinion is or something, but they may not want to attend meetings. I can't hear you, I've got... So that would be, that's a proposal, you have to have that thought. Yes, also, it would be three members of the council. Right, I'm going to see what Peter has to say first.
I'd like to second that, because I think this is in danger of drifting on, we could be deferring and deferring.
You don't want to do that. It's always fair on Willerbrook.
We've got to get to groups, we have. So I think the working group should be all embracing, it's not just looking at the lease or talking, it needs to bring the whole thing together to a comprehensive law. And that we can have a vote in a month, hopefully, two months maximum, and really get it moving forward.
Thank you. So it's been proposed by, have you got an amendment to this, Martin?
Yeah, I just wanted to make it sort of more clear, because that was what I was going to be, but you added it in, that they might like to be a representative, but I'd like it more clear that, because it was mentioned there are at least four residents in the ward who are affected.
Four existing residents.
One person from that group was appointed on to the working group.
Or feedback from them, so...
Yeah, because I want to get, I'm not against maybe to do something, I'm just against what's happened and the way we're moving forward.
Well, we've moved through, we've moved through that bit now, we've forgiven.
Everyone's got a major passion.
Three, we have, we've got three councillors, Peter's second, all those in favour of a working group? That is, that's going to be unanimous. Let's decide who's going to be on that working group. Right, we've got Anne wants to be on it, Jean, you're representative...
Johnny would like to be on it.
Yeah, I thought, sorry, somebody said Jean.
I thought you might like to be on it, because you've never...
Yeah. Sorry. Yeah, I do, but I'm a bit, I'm going to say I'm a bit confused, because I understand what you want from the working group. What I didn't understand was, we're not discussing the plans, are we?
No, 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 you're going to be collecting information, putting forward a document that hopefully convinces the council one way or the other. So you're not, I'm not going to actually look at plans and go, yeah, I want it to be pink and blue or whatever. Right. I think she would be the perfect person for that one. Right, so Joyce wants to go on it, Martin, do you want to go on it as well?
Yes, please.
There's only going to be three, so we'll obviously have to vote on this. Is there anybody else that wants to go on it? Well, I'll be going on it, if I get voted on.
The chairman should be on it.
That's what I figured, thanks. So we can only have three, so we now need... No, no.
We could have, we actually have the working group.
We are talking about the positioning.
We're looking at how many, we're looking at three, we're looking for three people. So Anne was proposed by...